Okay, if everyone's had a chance to read over the minutes and operating statements for last month, we're up for a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve the operating statements, December 17th, 2018 council meeting minutes, January 14th, 2019 work session minutes, and Quantum's financial statement for December 2018.
I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, ayes?
Aye.
Noes, motions carried. Okay, under Mayor's report, we have a couple of things we've had to bring up tonight, the accounting and auditing service proposal, which we have to do every couple of years. We have a for the cost year ending June 30th, 2020. The estimate is the cost would be $21,900. And it's, we have it, auditing company has give it to us for three years. The cost for ending June 30th, 2021 would be $22,300. And the cost year ending June 30th, 2022 is $22,700. And this is one of the, we do not have to put this out for bid, so we are open for, unless there's any questions, we're open for a motion to approve these bids.
I make a motion, we approve the bids for Lindsay Professional Associates for the audited, for the 43 years, 2020, 2021, and 2022.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
And a second, are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, ayes?
Aye.
Noes, motions carried. We'll get the documents signed and sent back in. And then also, we have for the purchase of a MIOX system for the water treatment plant. And this work is done by Jeff Glass, our contractor, and is a proposal of $14,750 for this system. It's money that has been budgeted for the FY 18, 19 for part of the new chloration system.
All right, I make a motion that we pay for this $14,750 for the MIOX for our treatment plant.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, ayes?
Aye.
Noes, motions carried. Help keep our drinking water nice and pure. Okay, a couple of other things. This past weekend, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I was in Rockville for the Maryland Municipal League Board Retreat. We were supposed to have a couple of months ago, and due to flooding, they canceled it. So we had it this week. And a couple of things we approved for the summer conference this summer. There will be a, one of the SNAP sessions that we know for sure, I think it's going to be on Monday afternoon, will be a Narcan training. It'll be a 45-minute class. When your MML books come out, look at the book, look at the registration in it, because right now, we have the one class and maybe the second class. If we have enough people, the second class will be on Wednesday. But there will be a limited number of people that can go to that. And when you get completed with your Narcan training, you will receive a vial of Narcan, and then you will also get a packet of, it's a packet they give you that you can dispose of, other narcotics in the correct way. Everyone who was in the board meeting over the weekend did get Narcan training, and they gave us our Narcan. There are stipulations on how you use it and everything, how you have to keep it. So that was one of the classes that we had. And so we will be having also at the summer conference, there will be a one-and-a-half-hour class on active shooter session. Active shooters is getting to be a problem, people going into places. So that's going to be another class that's going to be, when you look at your booklet when it comes out, there are probably two of them that you're going to have to register for early on before you get down there to the summer conference, just to make sure that you can get in those classes. September is emergency preparedness month for the whole state. County Office Building has a really nice program every year on emergency preparedness. I'm working, trying to have also emergency preparedness, some kind of awareness here in Union Bridge, because what we found out last several times, when we have our frequent floods, there are still people in Union Bridge that don't know how to get out of town or end in town. So we have to, plus, not only that, but also what to do when there's bad weather, when there's snow, ice, sleet, bad, you don't have electricity. So I'm working with some people at the county, and so we're going to have some type of, and may not be September, but I'd like to do it that same month, for emergency preparedness. If anybody has chance in September at the County Office Building, they have a wonderful display of emergency preparedness that day. It's about a three- or four-hour class, have the trucks there in the trailer, so try to make that. Also, had an email from Delegate Susan Krebs, which all of our delegates do it, they have for any seniors that are seniors in high school in District 5, which all of Carroll County from Route 26 all the way to, this way to the Pennsylvania line is District 5, they are accepting people that are seniors for applications for scholarships. They do this something every year, and some years, they have a hard time finding people that want to apply for a scholarship. And they contact the schools and things like that, but sometimes the children just don't worry about it, and the parents are the ones that are paying for the colleges, and they should get out here and push these kids a little bit and make sure that they apply for their scholarships. Each one of our senators, our senator has one, and our delegates have one, so there's a possibility of four different scholarships right there that you can apply for, which if they give one through the delegates, it's probably only going to be one of the delegates but that, and then the senatorial one. So there's a good possibility that, you know, there's something they can work for. I know we do one for the Sons of American Legion in Tawny Town, that's only $500, and last year, we had one person apply. $500 is $500, so buy your books for a semester. So there are scholarships out there, you just have to check with the schools and apply for them. This coming week is the Maryland Mayors Association, that will be in Annapolis, that's Thursday, Friday, or, yeah, Thursday and Friday. We will be, I will be there with the other mayors of the state of Maryland. I think right now, there's 156 municipalities, 157 municipalities, I think right now, there are about 101 that are registered to be there this week. So we'll be taking up some issues, we'll be going down on the Senate and the House floor with some issues. And even though we got highway user revenue last year, we still have to worry about five years out, we're still be fighting for the remainder of that, so that we can get the remainder of those funds by, in the next five years, so we can get all of that. And that is about all that I have on my report right now. We will go to John.
Okay, you, I believe, have been given the FY 20 Capital Improvement Program for fiscal years 2020 to 2025. This has been recommended by the Planning Commission at their meeting on January 17, 2019, under Resolution Number 01-2019. And of course, it's got some updated background information, but really, the plan itself hasn't changed much. There, I mean, it looks, I'm sure it looks familiar, and we've kind of been the same routine here in the last several years, really, because there hasn't been a lot of funding to get new projects in the plan. And a lot of the proposed projects are development-driven anyway, so they kind of wait for the public works agreements to come along. So before you is Mayor and Council Resolution Number 09, I'm sorry, 01-19 for discussion and approval.
They came out a week or so ago, the council had a chance to look over that. Like John said, it's basically, there's not a lot of changes because of the financial.
You want a motion?
Yeah, if your advisor approving of it, we need a motion to accept the capital improvements.
All right, I make a motion, we accept the capital improvement. The resolution's 01-19.
I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve capital improvements program. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, ayes?
Aye.
Noes, motions carried.
Okay, then I'll, we'll pass that around in just a moment. The only other thing I have is that when we met the last time, we were expecting the Citizens Solar PSC case to be deferred, the hearing schedule, and that did happen by order of the Administrative Law Judge. So the processing was temporarily suspended. Citizens is due to propose a new schedule this week. I haven't received anything yet, but we'll be entitled to comment on that, and I'll keep you in the loop once we know that. That would include, one possibility is they would simply extend for another month before they propose a schedule, depending on whether they're up to date with the information they need for the state. But once they get us on a schedule, we should get the new public hearing dates and the testimony dates and the things that we need. So at this point, we don't, there are no dates until the new schedule comes out. That's all I have.
Okay, and I know they have been talking to the county about the possibility, just on what the management over here and about some right of ways, so.
I haven't heard about that.
Yeah, you probably heard it last week also, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we'll go down. Next on our agenda, Jackson Ridge, Jim Pyatt. Jim, how are you?
Hi, Jim Pyatt, Woodhead Building and Development. Just two quick questions. Any update for the INI project? I know one of the recommendations was to concentrate on two of the, or the metered basins on the west side of town. I think it was Basin 5 and 103, if I'm not mistaken. And then the other question was GHD's, has there been any progress within the Order of Civil Benefit Assessment, looking at those?
We have not received anything back yet. I don't believe Dawn, unless it's just come recently, we haven't gotten any.
Are we waiting for a proposal from GHD?
Yes, mm-hmm. And the weather and everything, everybody's running a little bit behind time right now, so we're waiting on them.
And the INI project?
Yeah, I can, the INI project, I'm not as familiar with, but Mike Reynolds has in his report that the next step will be closing out the grant, receiving reimbursement, and then he's working on resubmitting an application and have updated costs to include the opinion of probable cost indicated in GHD's INI study. And I believe he's also looking for other monies from rural development. So he's working on that, but, you know, that's always a slow process. The, and I don't believe the council, I know Dawn knows this, we got an email, well, we were also concerned that we did not hear back from GHD in a timely manner. We met with them on October 25th, and it's a pretty complicated
Yes.
... study that we're asking them to get into, so we didn't expect to hear back from them right away, but we thought 30, 45 days would have been reasonable. I sent them an email back in early January when we hadn't heard anything. I checked in with Dawn, she hadn't heard anything. And we got a reply from Calvin George on January 15th. Sorry for the late response, however, please be informed that David Kerr will be leaving GHD. Well, you all may remember, David Kerr was kind of instrumental in the, when we interviewed GHD and we awarded them the work. His last day is on January 25th, so that's already coming on. I will be assigning another manager to this project. We will get you this proposal. We are in the process of reassigning his projects to other project managers. So we wait as a result of that. I don't think there's any good excuse for that much of a delay, and we weren't expecting it, but, you know, it is what it is at this point. And we had a very productive meeting. We were able to share a lot of information and history, and Calvin is still at GHD, and Calvin was at the meeting, and he's also a very knowledgeable guy when it comes to this stuff. And so all is not lost from the meeting, and Calvin certainly understands what we need and what we're looking for. So hopefully, you know, that proposal will come our way, and we'll get this thing back on track, but we've, it has slipped a little bit.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Okay, now we're going to go with our deputy, Brian Kusay. I think he has a little presentation for us, he has a report plus a presentation.
Good night, good evening. Between the dates of December 15, 2018, and to January 27, 2019, Carroll County Sheriff's Office responded to 74 calls for service within the town limits of Union Bridge. Out of those calls for service, case required to report, which were the following. On December 29th, at 2018, at approximately 1:44 hours, deputies responded to the 100 block of South Main Street, reference to an armed robbery that just occurred. Investigation revealed that two subjects entered the establishment, told the clerk at gunpoint and demanded money. Suspects were able to get an undisclosed amount of currency before fleeing on foot. At this time, it appears that the suspects were linked to additional robberies around the area. Case remains open pending further investigation. On December 31st, 2018, at approximately 7:33 PM, deputies responded to the Union Block of North Main Street for disorderly subject. Upon arrival, it was, or upon arriving in the area, a second 911 call was received, which led the deputy to the 200 block of East Albert Street. Upon arrival, it was discovered that the subject was having a mental health emergency. Subject was transported to Carroll Hospital Center for additional treatment. Case was closed. On this correction, on January 2nd, 2019, at approximately 14:08 or 2:08 PM, deputies responded to the 4700 block of Green Valley Road, reference to an anal complaint. Upon arrival, it was discovered that a vehicle had struck a deer, causing the deer to be severely injured. At that time, the deer was euthanized in order to put it out of its misery. Case was closed. On January 8th, 2019, at approximately 5:30 PM, deputies responded to the 200 block of East Albert Street, reference to a self-inflicted stabbing. Upon arrival, it was discovered that the victim had fled the residence and returned shortly thereafter and was suffering from a mental health emergency. Subject was transported to Carroll Hospital Center by Med 89 with non-life-threatening injuries. Case was closed. On January 11th, 2019, at approximately 8:43 AM, deputies responded to the area of White Street and West Pride Way Street, reference to several 911 hang-up calls. At the time, deputies were unable to locate any emergency. It was learned by the Carroll County Emergency Community Center that this was the second day for the calls. At approximately 10:43 hours, yours truly, completed a further investigation into the matter. During the investigation, it was revealed that two eight-year-old juveniles, while on the school bus, had made approximately 22 prank calls to 911 over three days. Both juveniles were charged with 22 counts of telephone misuse and 10 counts of telephone misuse, obscene calls, and referred to the Department of the Juvenile Services. Case was closed by arrest. On January 11th, 2019, at approximately 9:43 AM, deputies responded, or, correction, deputies made contact with the victim at the sheriff's office in reference to a fraud. It was learned that the victim resides in the 400 block of Quaker Hill Road. Investigation revealed that unknown suspects were able to access the victim's bank account and made several transactions in several states across the nation. Investigation continues. On January 12th, 2019, at approximately 6:48 AM, deputies, correction, in the area of East Locust Street and W Street, deputies conducted a traffic stop on a vehicle for a speed infraction. During the stop, an odor of marijuana was detected from the vehicle, allowing for a proper cause search. Search of the vehicle yielded 3.4 grams of marijuana that was seized. It was also learned that the driver was currently driving on a suspended or higher driver's license, and the vehicle's temporary registration plate was listed to another vehicle. Further investigation revealed that the vehicle is in fact not registered in any state. The vehicle was stowed from the roadway, and the driver was released on citations and noticed to appear. Case was closed by arrest. On January 16th, 2019, at approximately 11:40 AM, deputies responded to the 200 block of East Albert Street, reference to a violation of a protective order. Upon arrival, it was discovered that the respondent of the protective order returned to the location and attempted to gain entry by climbing through the window. Responded, fled the area once confronted by individuals inside the residence. Charges were filed with the courts, and arrest warrant was issued. As of 4 o'clock this afternoon, it was learned that the subject turned himself in. With that, I decided to do a year-end review for 2018 for the town of Union Bridge. So we'll start off with calls for service, and it's kind of hard to read, I hope you guys have a, have it actually in a paper form. But for calls for service, we handled 651. Sorry. One call, excuse me. Let me see here.
651?
Oh, sorry, 650, yes, 651 calls for service. Out of those calls, suspicious activity was 41, 80 was avoiding improper checks, 203 were traffic stops, and parking problems or assisting motorists, or in other words, selective enforcement was 81. With that, that's all proactive enforcement. The other issues that we have that are high, alarm calls were, were up at 20, animal complaints were 11, 21 disturbances, 28 domestic disputes, 13 accidents not injury, civil matters and non-criminal issues were 19, medical or check welfare were 46, and all other were 56. The ones that we should be concerned about are robberies, which was one, technically two, but since the armed robbery, that came as a holdup alarm, so it doesn't trigger, for calls for service as a robbery, triggered as an alarm. So, but it's documented on the report, I'll explain that shortly. Assault and battery were three, burglary and obstruction were one, theft was eight, and frightened or deceptive behavior was four. What does that mean for calls for service for the year? They were down. So we handled 650 calls for service, last year, we handled 300, or seven, 761, which is a difference of 110 calls for service difference. And in 16, it was even lower, or, which was 28, or 29, excuse me. Monthly breakdown, I started pretty much full-time in October, so calls for service went up because of traffic enforcement. Reportable offenses, we had 62 reported offenses within the town limits. Out of that, 16 were all other non-criminal. What's that mean? Emergency petitions, which is, emergency petitions, which is a mental health emergency, police information or suspicious condition that we write on, weapon discharge, ordered to euthanize an animal, found property or recovered property, verbal domestics, vehicle searches after a proper cause search, overdoses unintentional, because it's a Chris Marison bond, we can't charge on overdoses now. County ordinance violations, vehicle pursuits, crisis response team operations, which we actually had one of those this year, canine deployment for a canine trap or scam, assist a condemned or assist fire for sentry into a residence if it was a medical issue. Traffic incidents was four. Out of that, what's that? Unrested vehicle, uninsured vehicle, driving penalty license, reverse license, which is considered a license, considered into that. Theft, 11. Aggravated assaults, so going back to the calls for service, if it just comes in as a domestic, then it goes into aggravated assault later on, when it's documented. Robberies, and again, this is where it shows two, we had a commercial robbery in a residence, or individual robbery, which the individual robbery was a drug deal gone wrong. Burglaries for commercial and residential, there was two residential burglaries and one commercial robbery. July is our hot month with 11 reportable offenses. October was second with eight, and March was seven. Out of reportable offenses, we're down since previous year. 11 from last year, 37 from 16. Reportable offense breakdowns, this is your crime, there's a little chunk here of proactive enforcement and all other, which would be the non-criminal issues. 19 percent are repeat offenders, which is why it's important that we start trying to get enforcing the nuisance ordinance. Breakdowns for the years per month, again, July seems like it's always a hot month, along with June, the hotter weather, people are crazy. Well, and December. Uniform reporting, or what we have to report back to the state in order to them for reporting back to the FBI. We had two robberies, which was up from last year. Assaults were down by one from last year, and several from 2016, because we had 21 assaults from 16. Burglaries were down four from last year, and two from 16. Thefts were up though, by six from both years. Arson, we had two. Drive comparison. Overdoses, we had six overdoses, technically seven, one fatality within 18 in the town limits, and 17, which is, it was drastically up. 17 was four, and in 16, we had two overdoses, one resulting in a fatality. How do we stand in comparison with the county? This is only, our analysis person hasn't actually updated the website yet for the end of the year for 2018, but as of July, correction, December 1st of 2018, we handled 473 overdoses within the counties, 67 resulting in fatalities. Out of the patrol sector, which Union Bridge is considered into patrol area six, we resulted in seven out of the 17 for that area. How do we compare to other jurisdictions? We're similar. The age range for overdose victims, how many do you think that is, young kids and young people?
More.
Yep. Our, the top prior, or the top one for the list is 25 to 34 is 177. Second with 35 to 44 with 97. 45 to 54 leads into the third with 68, and then 19 to 24 hit 67. How do we compare with Union Bridge and New Windsor? Were higher last year. New Windsor only had two with one fatality. In previous years, they've had, they've only averaged one per year, so. Traffic arrests were down from previous years, drug arrests were down from two by previous years, and DUIs were down by one from last year. Proactive enforcement, selective enforcement, we were down by five this year, which means that when I sit alongside the road, like up in front of the elementary store or wherever, Quaker Hill Road, I call it a selective, so I don't have to call out the traffic stop every time, or the location, I just say location on the car. So with that, we were down by five, 47 last year, and seven, only 12 in 16. Property checks, 80 last year, 92 the year prior, and 98 the year prior. Trap enforcement, we were only down by 26 stops this year from last year, and we were drastically higher than 16. The breakdown for traffic stopper per month, as you can see, when I first heard you, was 17, full-time. The breakdown for traffic stops per month, as you can see, when I first heard it, it was seventeen, full-time here. It was drastically high in six, or in seventeen, but it's, I start to hear high and then kind of going to. Is my citation, how many traffic enforcement occurrence working, anybody? It is. Um, seventeen chat, or, uh, property damage accidents occurred in sixteen, twenty and seventeen, we're down to thirteen. Uh, injury accidents, it stayed the same at one for all three years. What was the total amount of direct fees from the traffic stops that law have been in town along with other deputies? One point nine pounds of marijuana seized with a street value of an estimated street value of about fifteen hundred dollars. Um, nine point five grams of CBD oil, which is a concentrated, um, PHC oil. Whoop, wrong button, with a street value of a hundred and ninety dollars estimated. A hundred and thirty-three point six grams of magic mushrooms seized with having an estimated street value of four hundred and seventy-one dollars. Six oxycodone pills seized at ninety dollars. Eleven point one grams of crack cocaine seized with the, um, estimated value of about eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Meaning three thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars for seized from the streets of Union Bridge. How do we compare, oh, the breakdown between both towns, um, which is interesting. So marijuana, we seized, um, uh, one traffic stop earlier, we seized three pounds of marijuana from one vehicle. Um, so with that, it took it up to four point four three pounds, um, at an estimated street value of six thousand five hundred and ten dollars. We seized thirty-five pills, um, with a street value of approximately a hundred and ninety dollars. Um, and we seized one value of heroin over there at one point five grams, um, which has street value of twenty dollars. Grand total of estimated, um, between both towns was eight thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars from the streets. How do we continue to be, or, for rent crime? Um, obviously, property checks, crime prevention door placards, um, which I left in the car unfortunately. Um, but this year, um, I'm going to be a little bit more proactive and I'm going to creep the streets and see if people's doors are locked in their cars and if there's valuables in their cars in plain sight, and you guys are going to get the door plug to show you, I've been around, I've checked, and you need to be more conscious. Um, obviously, more newsletters, articles, active enforcement, random patrol schedule, um, our Saber Street, Astro, proactive police, which I do have some other things up my sleeve this year as well, um, which I will not disclose. Um, and adopt new ordinances and referring citizens to help communities. So out of the over this, um, this year, um, two are, I'm going to say three are court ordered threat treatment, and other ones are not paid. We are pushing by, so, other than that, that's all. And the other thing, in March, I've been, um, found a training for my bicycle training. So I will be going for two days in March to, uh, get certified on the bicycle. So you will see me on the bicycle coming, um, in spring as well, which, please don't hit me. Other than that, um, so I have any questions?
That's a good report. Thank you, Brian. I know it sounds like a lot and, you know, but, uh, compared to other towns, it's not, you know, it's not bad. We're still small, uh, compared to New Windsor and things, and, uh, like I say, I just, uh, at a seminar last week and hearing some of these other totals and numbers in some of these other places, it's pretty devastating. Uh, the one class we had last week, gentleman was talking about, there was a, a, a pharmacy in Florida at one time was giving a hundred pills a month of, uh, oxycodone. And of course, they started checking on him and they went from a hundred a month, or up to ten thousand a month. And they, uh, lost their license and had a big fine to pay. And, uh, they're finding out there, it's just not there, it's all over the place. Uh, people transporting these pills and drugs from one state to another and, uh, you know, uh, it's pretty devastating. So, uh, we need everybody's eyes and ears out there to help the police do their job. It's not going to be an easy task, it's not a nice task, it's not very friendly, but if you see something, make sure that you contact the sheriff's department. I tell them quite a few times the things that I see at nighttime when I'm riding around town and it's, uh, it's not nice. But it's not only here either. Okay, um, any other comments and concerns from anyone? Front and center.
Hi, Captain. Sherry Thompson, Union Bridge, on behalf of Dream Big Union Bridge. Um, coming up on February fifteenth at St. James Church, we're going to be having our soup social, which is going to start at five-thirty. It's free, open to anyone in the town of Union Bridge that wants to come. Uh, we had a real successful one last year. We had probably twenty couple people show up for that, so, um, we're kind of looking forward to that and waiting to get back to some community. Um, there was flyers and things put in different churches and around the businesses and things like that, so. Um, March eighth is the deadline. We're going to be having a sub sale. The subs will be delivered on March nineteenth and they're going to come from Schultz Dally. So you can, uh, place orders, either contact someone from Dream Big, or there'll be order links at S. Bars and at the pharmacy and places like that. Um, we're having our Easter egg hunt on April twentieth. And we did like a thousand Easter eggs or something like that, so we upped the ante because we had such a fabulous turnout for that.
What was the date, Sherry?
Uh, April twentieth. And I'll be at the community center, I just got to get the, you know, work out the details for that. Um, and the other thing is we're going to be doing our duck derby. Um, we were going to change the date, but since it's the, um, was the hundred and fiftieth anniversary or something for the train museum, so we're going to do that this year with them. It, does anybody know that you were doing a duck derby too, or?
No, they was trying to coordinate it, coordinate it with all the same day with the, uh, railroad day, railroad day.
Okay, because I seen in the newsletter where they said they were doing a duck derby.
The same way as the D. Bo days, they tried to do it all.
Okay. Well, we're separate from that, so we're just, we are going to do it, we're going to do it that day, but then after this year, we're going to move the date because it's kind of cold when they got to get in the water to get the duck. So that's the only reason we decided to move it, and we want to be part of that celebration, so that's why we're going to keep it the same date. So, and then we got a report at our last meeting, um, about the butterfly gardens and Mother Nature will be telling the tale on what the outcome of that is, but we were really happy to be able to support that. So, we meet the first Monday, six o'clock, St. James. Anybody's welcome. Thanks.
Oh, Sherry, while you're there, um, I don't know, did, did you receive the letter from the person that was complaining about how you judge your Christmas, your Christmas decorations?
I did not receive the letter.
We got, we got a letter here and, uh, said that they complained to the town, and I said, well, the town is not in charge of the Christmas decorations. Uh, I, I forget the gentleman's name, we'll give you a copy of it. He said that it was the same people won, blah, 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 and stuff like that, and, and the way they, he wasn't satisfied with the way they do the, the judging of it, so we'll give you a copy of that.
That's somebody we can't please anybody, but no, not aware of it.
But I told him.
But I know there were different winners this year, but I haven't been reactive, um, with Dream Big because I've been reactive with my church with some different, um, groups that I had gotten involved with, so.
But we told him that we were not in charge of that, that was, you know.
That's fine. We know there's not always be somebody who wants to help something, so guys with the territory. Everyone else is positive and we're doing a good thing, so we're going to keep, we'll keep it going.
We'll give you a copy of that letter. Maybe they'll, uh, come to your meeting and, you know.
That would be great.
They can maybe come and help.
If you happen to talk to them, they're more than welcome. Maybe they could be a judge.
Yeah.
We're open to suggestions.
Okay. Okay, anyone else or public comments, concerns? Not, we're going to go into committee reports, uh, we'll start with Laura.
Okay, so in the month of January, I called and had the Christmas lights turned off. I have reported a street light that is out. Edgar has told me of another one that's out at East, on East Locust. I attended the C.C.R.C. meeting on January tenth, and I wanted to let everybody know that there is a county liaison for, um, cable problems and cable issues, and that would include billing and service. If you have any problems with cable, um, she's there to help you. Um, and C.M.C. is testing an H.D. channel that is called C.M.C.H.D. I think that's all I have.
Okay. Edgar.
Okay. The center is complete. Uh, we had our final inspection today. Uh, we got some things that, uh, that we got to take care of up there, and then we'll be open for the rental. So, if you get a chance, go up and look at it, so. It's not a while.
Okay. Donald.
Well, I've got very little. Stan Ball has been doing an excellent job, outstanding job of keeping our streets, uh, uh, clear. Actually, I had no complaints whatsoever. I can't believe it, but I'd had no complaints at all, so.
Jinxing yourself.
On the wall. So we're, hopefully, uh.
The big snow this week.
Yeah. Will continue as it, as it has been. That's all I got.
And I did, I did forget, there are two small sinkholes along the bank out by Dollar Store. They have been reported to the county. Uh, I noticed those, I've been checking, time to get heavy rains and stuff, and I'm checking to see how the water is going in that stormwater management pond. Uh, so, uh, I did report those to the county last week when I had a meeting down there. Um, and I am waiting, uh, we're going to have a meeting, uh, very shortly with the, uh, uh, Corps of Engineers. Uh, that's the federal people about to treat it's in the stream down here. Uh, we're finally going to get some assistance on that, I hope. We have a meeting scheduled and we'll see what happens after that meeting, see what's going to happen with that. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, our new commissioner, Commissioner Boucher, was up here on a Sunday and walked from Main Street seventy-five all the way down, and, uh, uh, he has some suggestions. He's already contacted a congressman and some other people about the flooding in Union Bridge. Uh, one thing you have to remember, where it was eighty inches of rain in Union Bridge in Carroll County this year. I don't care what you do with eighty inches of rain, you're not going to stop the flooding. So, when I get phone calls, what are you going to do about the flooding? We've got to talk to the guy upstairs and ask him to make sure it stops raining a little bit, because eighty inches, there's, there's people in Carroll County that have sinkholes, have had to put, uh, some pumps in their basements that's never had them before. Water is running through the ground, through their walls. So, um, you know, you may, you know, with eighty inches of rain, it's just unbelievable. Uh, and, and I don't know what you can do to stop that. I know, I don't have those powers, I wish I did, but, uh, so, uh, he's, uh, him and some other people are wanting to have a meeting to come back up and do some walking around Union Bridge about the flooding. And, uh, like I say, I've been out of town last week, I'm going to be out this week. But we'll be at the county office building tomorrow and I'll run it by them, you know, maybe we can come up with a date where they can come up and do some walking around. But, uh, uh, just keep in mind, when we have this amount of rain, it's not a lot we're going to deal. And unfortunately, I put the signs out on Main Street that roads are closed and people, I've had some people ticked off at me because they said, why don't you put signs down seventy-five? I have no jurisdiction down Route seventy-five. I have jurisdiction on Main Street. Uh, state road supervisor years ago told me, he asked me one day, he says, who authorized those signs? I said, I did. I had direct order from the governor's office that I am responsible for the wealth and, uh, safety of people in the town. And I will put the signs out when that road has, where you cannot see the yellow line in the road, I'll put it there and keep it there until the road is clean. Because we never know if that road may be washed out in there. It could be a big hole in the center. And if you look at the news that we've had this year, there's been cars and trucks floated away in three or four inches of water. We had a young lady outside of New Windsor on Sands Creek Road, her vehicle, she was riding her parents' car, uh, two thousand and fifteen or sixteen new car, and it floated down the stream in a couple inches of water. These new cars will float. And, uh, I, I blocked the road off because I don't think it's, uh, uh, you know, even though you have a big truck or four-wheel drive, you may be able to get through there, but that's putting air fire company people and the other people at risk to go out and try to save you. So, it's, it's a little unhandy if you get all the way to Union Bridge and you have to turn around and go back around Shepherd's Mill Road or something, but that's, uh, something that we have no jurisdiction over what happens down on seventy-five outside of town, so, uh, you'll have to bear with us on that. And my concern is, uh, twenty-twenty, December of, November or December of twenty-twenty, they're talking about replacing the bridge on Shepherd's Mill Road, and that road's going to be closed for eight to ten months. I don't know what we're going to do for getting in and out of town at that time, uh, so, that's a county problem, so.
Are we working in the rain?
That's right. So, that's their schedule right now, and we have no jurisdiction over that either, so. Other than that, we have no other business for tonight. Our, our next work session meeting will be February the eleventh. Next council meeting is February the twenty-fifth. Is there anything else for us this evening?
I have one thing. Brian, you're doing a good job.
Yes.
We appreciate your dedication.
Anything else? Hearing none, we're in line for adjournment?
I'm making motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'll second.
Motion is second. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, rise?
Aye.
Those, motion's carried. Thank you very much.